Good evening and welcome to this, the May 12th meeting, the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos. Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Branning.
Here.
Mayor Marshand.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I have a proclamation declaring May 18th through the 24th as Public Works Week in the city of Livermore. And I'm going to present this to our acting City of Livermore Public Works Director Judy Erlinson. Proclamation of the city of Livermore proclaiming National Public Works Week, whereas Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to public health, high quality of life, and well-being for the residents of Livermore. And whereas 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, with this year's theme, people, purpose present, highlighting three cornerstone ideals that Public Works employees work often in the background and without fanfare to enhance the quality of life for the residents of Livermore. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the residents and civic leaders of the city of Livermore to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs. And whereas the Public Works Department encompasses streets, lighting, solid waste and recyclables collection, landscaping, fleet, facilities, sewer, water, and asset management. And whereas these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting the city's roads, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, landscaping, streets, fleet, traffic signals, and street lighting, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Livermore proclaims the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week in the city of Livermore, and encourages residents to recognize the contributions that Public Works staff make every day to their health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And having worked over 40 years in that space, as both in water and wastewater, I'm very proud that we recognize the tremendous work that everyone in the Public Works system does. So, thank you, and I'll present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the hardworking men and women of the city's Public Works Department, I am pleased and honored to receive this proclamation. Thank you for your recognition.
Certainly, thank you. And now we go to a proclamation declaring June 2025 as Safety Awareness Month. I'll be presenting this to Jas Sidhu, our City of Livermore Risk Manager. So. Whereas, the incident rate of workplace injuries and illnesses in the United States remains at an undesirable level, and most are either preventable or can be reduced through raising safety awareness. And whereas the city of Livermore supports national safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees and residents through the Safety Committee and through safety policies and protocols. And whereas City of Livermore employees, including the Central Safety Committee, work to ensure the safety and well-being of all City of Livermore employees and residents by providing training, education, and outreach, and encouraging continual improvement in the community and workplace safety and health. Whereas, the Risk Management Division will hold Safety Awareness Month consisting of safety awareness trainings and activities to take place in the month of June, and encourages all employees to participate. And whereas, the City of Livermore City Council joins the members of the National Safety Council and other organizations across the country in their annual observance of June as National Safety Month. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Livermore proclaims June 2025 as Safety Awareness Month in the city of Livermore, and urges all employees and residents to help reduce accidents, injuries, and illnesses by practicing safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. Mr. Sidhu.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I am Jas Sidhu, your Risk Manager, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to recognize June as National Safety Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about staying safe, preventing accidents, and protecting lives. Each year, thousands of preventable injuries and accidents occur at home, on the roads, and in workplaces across the country. The truth is, safety isn't just a set of rules or a checklist. It's a mindset. It's a culture we build every single day through our actions and decisions. During the month of June, we're reminded that safety is not the responsibility of a few. It belongs to all of us. Leaders must set the tone. Employees must speak up. Families must practice together. Communities must work together. Thanks to the City Council, the City Attorney, and the City Manager, we aren't just talking about safety. We're committing to it by identifying risks, taking action, and empowering each other to do the right thing, even when no one is watching. During the month of June, we will be challenging employees to think about how they can contribute to a safer environment, because safety is everyone's responsibility. Thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you. Now we get to move on to some fun stuff. This is the 2025 Little League Intermediate World Series Tournament Draw. And we have Kathleen Minser, who's the Marketing and Media Director, Bill Abumrod, Tournament Director. Will provide a short presentation. How many years is this that it's been coming back?
That's a great lead-in question. So this tournament started in 2013. And when it started, it was only 11 teams, and only one game was televised. That was the championship game, which always happens on a Sunday. Well, we've grown to 12 teams, and ESPN is here for the entire week, and every game is televised, including the semifinals and finals. The tournament has grown a lot. Spectators in the last couple of years have been anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000 for the week. And we have people coming in from everywhere. And this year is going to be interesting, because it's the odd number year, which means Mexico will be here this year. They're automatically going to have a team. So it rotates between Mexico and Puerto Rico every other year. Puerto Rico could be here if they win the Latin American region. What makes this tournament so special also is there's always one host team that comes in from somewhere in the Tri-Valley. And when you look at the history of the tournament, the Livermore team in 2018 won the United States Championship, only to lose to South Korea in the World Series game. But a couple of years later, the Danville team won the US Championship and the whole World Series. So the local team has won a couple of times in the last 10 years. So we're very, very honored to be here tonight and have you guys help us with the draw. The tournament will start on July 27th, goes through August 3rd. Teams will arrive on July 25th, and we'll have an opening ceremony out at the field on July 26th. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen.
So I just want to thank you for all the support over all the years. And I'm always looking for my first pitch thrower, so I'll get that out there. And I'm always looking for national anthem singers. So if you know anybody that wants to come out and sing, we have lots of games to cover, so I'm always looking for that. So send them my way. All right, we're going to start the draw.
East. D-57. Bingo.
Southwest. The West.
Australia.
Asia-Pacific.
Sure, absolutely. All right. Do you want us to be down there? Okay, sure. We can actually move. I just got to give a shout-out to Bill before he walks out the door. The tremendous work that his crew, Kathleen and everybody else puts in on the field, they completely revamped that field and turned this from just a glimmer of what we could do into just a remarkable event that everybody looks forward to. Bill, the work that you've done out there has just been tremendous. And I just want to say thank you. You and Dave Wetmore brought this to Livermore, and what a tremendous success it's been. So, thank you very much. And we also have another proclamation. This is declaring May as Jewish Heritage Month. I'll be presenting this to Beth Wilson and Debbie Baelendorf, board members for Congressional Beth Emick. And I've been on a number of committees and commissions with Beth. So we have proclaiming Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas, the city of Livermore has been and continues to be home to people of many different national origins, immigration or refugee status, cultures, histories, races, ethnicities, religious affiliations or none, gender identities, sexual orientations, ages, education, economic status, and physical, mental, or emotional abilities. Our strength is derived from our diversity and inclusiveness. And whereas, the City Council believes that a city can best embrace unity and tolerance through leading by example and living our shared community values of welcome, inclusion, and respect, and by developing common ground in venues that allow us to talk and work together for service to each other and our community. And whereas, on April 20th, 2006, the federal government proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month, stating, quote, "As a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens," end quote. And since then, proclamations in support of Jewish Heritage Month have been made by presidents of the United States annually. And whereas, Jewish residents of Livermore have been and continue to be an important part of Livermore's past and present, contributing to the arts, science, and technology, education, and government, as well as building community and advocating for social justice for all. Now therefore, the City of Livermore City Council hereby declares the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in appreciation of the achievements and contributions made by members of the Jewish community. The City Council supports opportunities to learn more about Jewish American history and culture and celebrate Jewish Americans who are woven within the fabric of our community and country.
Mayor Marshand and City Council Members, we certainly thank you very much. We're honored to have this proclamation and it be recognized as a Jewish community. Jews in the Jewish community certainly have been an integral part of Livermore for a very, very, very long time. And so, we certainly appreciate the recognition of this City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, good to move on to item four. This is the open forum. The city clerk explained how people can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when council members believe it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for all items on the consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the City Council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chambers. Speakers will be announced in order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now after all of that, do we have anybody who wishes to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Craig Younger.
Good evening. I'm Greg Scott. Disclaimer, I'm neither a Republican or a Democrat. Today, Governor Newsom announced his plan to abolish homeless encampments. And it's, I don't know what delusional reality this governor lives in, but what he wants to do is force municipalities into doing what he wants by $3.3 billion in dispersment of housing funds out of a $6.4 billion bond. The plan isn't thought out, and the mayor brags about disbanding 16,000 encampments and doing photo ops. Where do those homeless go? A small fraction of them, less than 5% of them, get shelter. Los Angeles has had the best results, and Mayor Bass is trying hard against really difficult logistics. They've housed at least 10% of the unsheltered there. Yesterday morning, yesterday I watched this podcast, and these podcasters, male and female podcasters, they filmed the 50 square blocks of encampments in downtown Los Angeles. Where does the mayor think they're going to put all those people? Of 50 square blocks of encampments in Los Angeles? It's not even a realistic plan. Mayor Mahan of San Jose, his proposal is to build 1,400 shelter units. Well, think about that. 1,400 shelter units. If you could build, and you can't, let's do it for easy math. If you could build a shelter for $100,000, and you were sheltering only 1,000 of those 1,400, if you're building 1,000 of those units, well, one times 10 to the 3, times one times 10 to the 5, one times 10 to the 8, that's $100 million. Now, you know you can't build a shelter in San Jose for $100,000. It's many times that, maybe four times that or more. So it's over half a billion dollars to shelter 1,000. It isn't a realistic plan. And this is a city of San Jose is in a financial hole of $2.5 billion. So the pathways, you need to focus on getting safe areas. And the problem is, you can't, and oh, I wanted to say, in that filming of the 50 square blocks in Los Angeles, they didn't see the whole time one police officer, not one. So you're not going to solve this with the police, because your recruitments have gone down over five years in California. They've come up a little bit in the last six months, but it would take years to get there. You can only do it through private security and promoting private security. And what you do is provide housing for people in private security and people in social services to work and build a community with the homeless. Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Younger.
I'm not sure I'm going to follow that, but good evening, Council. I'm used to speaking into a microphone at Loomer High Football Games, where I've been the announcer for 15 years, so this is a little odd for me. My name is Craig Younger, and I'm a resident and homeowner at 224 Third Street. This is near Jay and across from Carnegie Park. My issue tonight is the increasingly difficult problem with parking. We live not only in an area that has limited timed parking, but additional red zones that were added after the new law went into effect near crosswalks January 1st. I have two issues. One is the timed parking, which is not being enforced. The city hired an outside agency to patrol, enforce, and issue citations to vehicles parked past the time allowed. This is not happening. In front of my home, there are cars parked for as long as eight hours during the working day. They are most likely employees of nearby businesses, who, since they've not been cited, continue to do so. We see the security company's patrol vehicle in the area, yet no citations are being issued. The city is paying this company to do a job that's not being done. The second issue I have is the new law regarding the red zones near crosswalks. Not only are people continuing to park in previous spaces, which are now red zones, on other streets, the parking spaces have not been removed and red zones painted. For example, two spaces in front of my neighbor's home have been eliminated by red zones. The same exact two parking spaces on Second Street remain in front of the Riada Restaurant. In my opinion, the red zones are more important here in front of Riada, where there's more traffic on Second Street. I understand the city is doing everything it can in a timely manner, but my neighbor's spaces were red-zoned almost immediately, yet the same spaces on Second remain. And we get started about DoorDash and Uber Eats drivers. We need to do something about this issue. It's only going to get worse. I know the new parking structure behind First Street will help, but until the city steps up and enforces the parking restrictions and red zone violators, they're just going to continue to do so. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, and we've been taking notes. Thank you very much.
That concludes open forum.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the open forum, bring it on to the consent calendar. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from consent for comment? Do they? Let's see, just, I have a quick comment on 5.2 regarding the fire zones. If you look at the map, most of the fire zones are grasslands. For example, Holden or Park, even the ones that are listed high fire danger. These are more grasslands for something like, and nothing compared to what we saw in the eucalyptus trees in the Oakland Firestorm. So these were maps that we received from the state fire marshal. So I was also surprised to see that Gillig was in a high fire zone or a moderate fire zone. But I think that was a carryover from the grasslands there on the other side. That. Yeah, that's all I have. Is there a motion to approve the consent? Oh, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right.
Alan Marling?
Mayor, Council, and fellow residents, 5.9 is a proposal to fly the pride flag. It is important to acknowledge and value the diversity in humanity, as that is what makes us strong. To live in denial of natural variation, to scorn it or suppress it, only ruins lives and weakens us as a society. It is a sad truth that some people in authority and the pundits they pay continue to try to sell the public on fear and hate. They do this to distract and divide us, stealing away the power we might have in unity. This specific pride flag recommended by staff is the Philadelphia version. It includes not only the rainbow, but also stripes of brown and black to honor the people of color in the queer community who may otherwise be overlooked or excluded by those with more privilege. It is important to acknowledge and value the diversity in humanity, as that is what makes us strong. For my money, I prefer the progress pride flag or the intersex inclusive progress pride flag. These still include the brown and black stripes in a way I find more aesthetic, and they also honor trans and intersex peoples who are themselves too often discriminated against, even within the greater queer community. It is important to acknowledge and value the diversity in humanity, as that is what makes us strong.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the comment period for the consent calendar. Is there any discussion, or does anybody wish to pull any of the consent items, Vice Mayor?
Just a quick comment following up on the public comment. I know it's not very far until Pride Month, but if we could look at getting a more modern pride flag, if not for this year, then for future Pride Months, that would be a possibility. Okay.
Any other comments on consent? All entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Barry Antos.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing, we have a hearing to consider a resolution authorizing Livermore's rates for solid waste actually to go down. This is something quite remarkable. So with that, I'll hand this over to staff.
Yes, of course. Honorable Mayor Marshand and members of the City Council, this is your City Manager, Mariana Burge. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by Judy Erlinson, Acting Public Works Director with the assistance of her staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Marshand and members of the City Council. The item for you tonight requests that the City Council consider the annual adjustment to LSI rates for the upcoming rate year 16, which coincides with fiscal year 2526. Livermore Sanitation, or LSI, began serving the city of Livermore in July 2010 after a competitive selection process. In April 2020, the City Council approved the updated franchise agreement with LSI, extending the contract term by a minimum of 10. extending the contract term by a minimum of 10 years. The franchise agreement states that LSI proposes rates and it's the city council's responsibility to authorize rates by determining if the proposed adjustment complies with the methodology as described in the franchise agreement. LSI is required to provide at least 30 days' notice to ratepayers when rates are adjusted. Rate adjustments occur every year using either an index-based methodology or a cost-based review. For this upcoming rate year 16, a cost-based methodology was used. The cost-based methodology involves review of LSI's actual costs and gross revenue to derive a rate adjustment factor for the upcoming rate period. Under the franchise agreement, some allowed cost increases are capped. HF&amp;H Consultants assisted city staff with a review of Livermore Sanitation's costs and revenues and found that an 8.67 rate reduction was warranted. The recommended rate reduction is due in large part to the caps placed on increases in costs as described earlier. Staff anticipates that rates will again increase in fiscal year 2627 and beyond as allowed by the franchise agreement. This table is a comparison of current rates and proposed rates and the number of cart subscriptions in each size. Approximately 80% of residents subscribe to the smaller cart sizes. Staff has confirmed that the rate adjustment calculations comply with the franchise agreement methodology and is therefore recommending that the city council authorize a decrease to rates for all customers by 8.67% as reflected by the updated Exhibit H to the franchise agreement. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, with that case, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Do we have questions from the council? Vice Mayor Brennan?
Not exactly a question, but sort of. I'm I'm pleased that we're being able to reduce the rates like that is awesome. And I, you know, thank you for going through the more difficult process of actually going through cost basis. I know it's a lot more work to get there. Always a little concerned, you know, with the reduction in rates, if we're going to see rubber banding on them. I want to be good stewards of people's individual funds where we're charging them, you know, the lowest rate possible, but also good stewards of public funds, making sure, you know, we don't have rates going up, down, up, down, up, down by large percentages, you know, eight. An 8% increase, we would have a lot more people in the audience right now. So I just want to check with staff, you know, as we did this. Next year, we're expecting rates to increase again, but we're not looking to have a huge swing back after this. This isn't going to cause a sudden shift, a major shift in rates. Is that correct?
So I would not anticipate that. The next three years are index based, so it really depends on CPI and what that does. So without, you know, hopefully we're 3% or 4% range, but without being able to predict what the economy and the CPIs will be doing next year at this time, it's difficult to give you a precise answer.
Okay, but those will be based off CPI and.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
But there's also caps in place, is that correct?
There are still caps in place in index-based years, yes.
Okay, and that's one of the things that helped us out in this this particular point in time.
That's correct.
Just want to reiterate that the city of Livermore is proposing a decrease of 8.67% in the solid waste hauling, a decrease.
Correct.
We don't get to say that very often, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands. Okay, is there? Councilmember Barrios?
Yeah, there you go. Anyway, we 292 million tons of garbage are produced every day in the United States. And that comes out to 4.9 pounds per person that day. And we only had 12% of the population of we in the world, we produce 12% of the trash and we only have 4% of population. I'm on the stop waste board and that's one of the things that we do is try to find out a way to reuse some garbage. When the ironic thing is that, you know, we don't want plastic because that's right now, they're saying chewing gum after a while, you get microplastics in your system. Anything we do nowadays is we're going to be plastic people pretty soon. Anyway, even the little green bags that we use for produce, those have microplastics in them. So you don't throw them in the organic garbage can because they will not use it. And we're trying to produce you know, you know, items that we can reuse and reduce. And the other thing is at this what stop waste, they had a little review of what they do. One of the things that we do is compost and they highlighted the fertile ground works. And and I told them that the Lions Club, we gave a friend that cussed her. This is a year old for what she does. They all knew her very well. So we finally got her out of her garden clothes and to come to our dinner in a nice dress. Anyway, that's one of the things that are being done out there. And plastic bags an issue and they're trying to cut back down on plastic bags. And ironically, I was over at Eva was electric and they had plastic cups. You can't recycle those. Next thing I do is I don't go and talk to them about that. Find a different way to use cups that we can reuse. Anyway, be conscious of what you do out there because, you know, a lot of people always talking about us, but we have grandkids coming. Yeah, apparently now they're worth 5,000 bucks each if you have a grandkid, a child growing to the the king. Anyway, think about their future, yeah. It's going to impact their little kids, their grandkids. When you get it all as I do, you'll have grandkids.
Thank you. And as Councilmember Barrios mentioned, there's free compost down at the compost hub there at fertile ground works. So just go down there, bring a couple of buckets and knock yourself out. And also, Councilmember Steve Dunbar?
Just two quick notes, as Councilmember Barrios mentioned, those green compostable bags are not designed to go in compost. We don't have the processing facilities for them there and there's still microplastics in them even after that. So please do your best to keep those out. And if you don't have one of those compost fails provided by Livermore Sanitation at your house, you can get one for free. Not all the apartments sometimes have them. Previous owner takes them, so please grab one if you need one.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wong?
I just want to make sure this is clear that I have it right and also the community members who are listening understand why there's a decrease this year because things may be different after this year and I don't want people to wonder what's going on. Is so is it that we're using per our agreement with LSI, the we're using a different method to calculate the rates? And there's a cap that kicks in and that's why the rates are going down. But that the next three years will go to the index-based system and and that's why there may be it may go up a little bit after this.
In any year, there's caps on the allowed costs. This year was a cost-based review, so we looked at the actual costs. Next year will increase costs based on indices. So yes, there's caps on all of the years. And yes, that's why the rate reduction for this year is primarily because of the rate caps.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, the entertainer motion?
So moved.
Vice Mayor moves staffer's great recommendation, second?
Second.
Okay, second from Councilmember Dunbar. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 6.2, hearing to consider a resolution requesting an Isabel neighborhood specific plan amendment.
Honorable Mayor Marshon and members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Birch. 6.2 is going to be presented by Ken Purville, associate planner with the assistance from Andy Ross, principal planner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give us a moment to get the presentation up and running.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The items for your review tonight are a civic plan amendment and a development agreement for Triad Place. The project site is approximately 27 acres and includes three parcels located in the Isabel neighborhood. The project is located north of I-580 at the intersection of North Canyon Parkway and Triad Place. The project site has a general plan land use designation of Isabel neighborhood, a zoning designation of business park and is surrounded by a mix of business park and office uses to the west, residential and residential to the east and south and open space hillside to the north. Two out of the three buildings are vacant and there is currently little to no demand to occupy the space. The site has access to public services and utilities. In June 2024, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with negotiating terms for a development agreement together with the review of a civic plan amendment for the Isabel neighborhood. Over the past year, staff has finalized terms with the applicant. The civic plan amendment would implement the Isabel neighborhood goals and policies and change the existing business park land use designation to residential transition. The residential transition zoning allows a density range of 15 to 25 dwelling units per acre. The applicant proposes to develop the site with approximately 450 residential units that include a mix of duplex condominium and townhomes. The use and density range are compatible with surrounding residential properties such as Montage to the east and Triad Cava to the south. The land use change was anticipated in the previously approved 2024 addendum for the Isabel crossings project. The addendum determined that the land use change is consistent with SEQA and no significant traffic, noise or air quality impacts beyond those previously identified in the Isabel neighborhood supplemental environmental impact report would occur. Government Code Section 65864 allows local jurisdictions and private parties to enter into development agreements to vest certain development rights and meet local requirements. The city council authorized staff to negotiate terms with the property owner. The negotiations consisted of incorporating city council priorities, general plan goals and policies and developer financials and timing. In short, here are the key points of the development agreement. The duration of the agreement would be for 15 years with the possibility of an extension, which would require council approval. The development agreement would vest the change in land use to allow the development of 450 units and require entitlements within two years. There is flexibility in the development agreement to allow a minimum of 405 units and a maximum of 518 units in compliance with the density range. No development entitlements are currently proposed. Development entitlements such as site plan design review and a subdivision map application will be required for development in the future. The project site is of a size and a shape that can accommodate residential uses and is adequately served by all necessary utilities and services. The development agreement would require the applicant to comply with the affordable housing ordinance and authorize opportunities for alternative methods of compliance such as providing inclusionary units and paying in lieu fees. Developer would be required to enter into an affordable housing agreement during the entitlement phase. The development agreement will also include offsite improvements, which will provide class four separated bike lanes along North Canyon Parkway. And lastly, the council adopted the community benefit policy and established the fund to secure community benefits through negotiations. The applicant has agreed to contribute a minimum of $4,202,000, which is based on the total unit count. Of that, $202,000 will be deposited into the social opportunity endowment fund within 180 days of execution of the agreement and future payments will be made as each building permit is issued. Therefore, planning commission and staff support the terms of the community benefits provided. The agreement is consistent with the general plan, secures a range of community benefits and ensures the project will be constructed as proposed within a reasonable timeframe. Future planning entitlements will be reviewed by the planning commission and city council and actions will include project review of subdivision map and site plan design review. The city council has flexibility on architectural design and can provide direction tonight on design types. If directed by the council this evening, the applicant has agreed to focus on providing traditional design such as craftsman farmhouse or Spanish architecture and rather than contemporary or modern design. The developer will be the developer will be required to submit applications within two years unless both parties agree to a change in the schedule. The entitlements will include affordable housing agreement that will provide the framework for a combination of of providing inclusionary units on site and or pay an in lieu fee per unit to go towards other affordable housing projects in the community. The council will decide how to allocate future funds from the social opportunity endowment for human services or public amenities such as parks, public facilities and economic incentives through the community benefits fund. In conclusion, planning commission and staff recommend the city council find the project to be covered by the previously approved 2024 Isabel crossings addendum and then none of the events under the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, section 15162 and 15164 have occurred and direct the planning manager to file notice of determination with the Alameda County Clerk. Adopt a resolution approving the civic plan amendment and introduce an ordinance approving the development agreement. That concludes staff's presentation. And Honorable Mayor, with your permission, I would like to invite the project applicant to make a brief statement about the project.
Certainly.
And staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, city council, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is David Balducci. I am the managing partner of Align Real Estate. We are the owner of this 27-acre campus. We purchased the campus nine years ago and it was fully leased, all three buildings. We expected it would stay that way. About three years after that, we got the first building back. And then a year after that, we got a second building back. So we took those two buildings for over five years with, you know, active with multiple brokers in the market. So we're just fighting into the city of Livermore has almost half of space like this available for rent right now. So it's it's a tough market. So we approached the city a couple of years back to try to prevent the campus from going totally vacant and we worked out the the package that Cam just showed you. So we're optimistic that we can move forward with these 450 homes. We're excited about the project and we hope we can support it. And with that, I'm going to have my colleague Dave Mukherjee explain a little more specifically about our application.
Respected mayor and council members, my name is Dave Mukherjee. I'm with Align Real Estate. I'll give a brief overview of the concept plan that we've included as a part of the development agreement. The concept plan has five attached typologies that range from two-story duets, two-three-story townhomes, stack flats and condos. The proposed architecture concepts as well as the circulation plan have been derived based on the design guidelines and the design standards that are published under the Isabel neighborhood specific plan. Going forward, we look forward to incorporating your comments in our entitlement package and we also look forward to working with the city on the entitlements and hopefully come back to you with our entitlement package. So, thank you.
Okay, you you concluded your comments? Okay, very okay, great. Okay, wasn't sure if the third gentleman was going to get up. Okay, the third expert. Okay, great. Okay, let's see, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. Brian Warner?
Good evening, folks. My name is Brian Warner. I'm a resident here of Livermore, also a business rep for sheet metal workers local 104, Alameda County Building Trades. A while back, A while back, we adopted the Isabel neighborhood specific plan, and in that specific plan, we outlined in there that we would encourage the use of state-approved apprentices and make sure we focus on at-risk youth folks getting into the trades and having a shot at an opportunity to build these projects. Right now, we're talking about changing this development agreement from commercial use to residential, rezoning this here, let's just call it, and adding it, and we talk about community benefits, but I don't see no community benefits for the at-risk youth folks here or the encourage of state-approved apprentices. I think this is quite quick. I don't know that we've had any community meetings also to have the community input on this before changing this. So I think it's just a few things to take into consideration. Been trying to figure out some way how apprentices like myself who came through the program can be on this project. Haven't found a way yet to do so. So appreciate your guys' time tonight and hearing me out. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Comments, questions from the council? Anybody? Okay, questions, comments?
Okay. I'll start with the things that I talked about with staff and maybe start with design. So staff knows that I put in some recommendations that staff took nicely, so these are all feedbacks for the actual application when it comes through. Namely, I felt that connection at the northwest site was very important, given that we have a school site planned to the west. If it ever gets developed, we would want to have a connection there. Balance of drought tolerant and native plants was brought up. There was a perceived landscape plan in there. Not sure what the final balance would be, but I know that's something that we've, the Planning Commission has talked about and that we've talked about and that I support. Talk about some improvements to streets within the development to be as safe as possible. I noticed in the Planning Commission meetings, we talked about a race crosswalk if that was necessary at the midpoint uphill bike lane, whatever the case may be, to make sure that the circulation there is very low speeds as it is residential. And then I talked a little bit about the bunching of unit styles. I know that, you know, there's always a cost trade-off inherent there where you have similar unit styles and, but we've done a good job in my, in my own townhouse development of a mix of size ranges and unit types, and I'd like to see that continue where we have the authority to do so. My feedback on the design was, I didn't really, I didn't really, I know the rest of Triad is somewhat more modern, but I felt like the existing portions of Triad did a reasonable balance of plane breaks and articulation. I felt like that what we had was going a little bit overboard. I didn't necessarily need to move it to contemporary styles necessarily, but I felt like just it was getting a little bit too busy in my head. I know we talk about plane breaks on the Planning Commission where we're trying to say, we're trying to make it look like the units are individual, and sometimes we take that a little bit too far. So that was my feedback on design. I'm interested to hear the rest as well. I was glad to hear the applicant talk a little bit about their attempts at leasing. I know that we don't love to give up commercial space for no reason. I know that the size has a lot to do with what you're able to lease, you know, and whether it's industrial mix or just straight commercial. So thanks for giving that information. Five years seems like a long time to be attempting to lease, so I know it's been baking for quite some time. In terms of impact from this development on the neighborhood, I was actually walking alongside my job today, and I was looking out at the hills south of the airport, so we have a nice flat angle, and I couldn't even see from that angle back to this site. I was blocked by, I think, the Zone Seven building. But, you know, in contrast to our neighbors who have their development on the hills, I really, you know, we're protecting ours pretty well here, and I think that actually allows us to continue when we put in housing in this location rather than blocking because of our RENA obligations. We have that trade-off to always be balancing. Let's see. I wanted to go a little bit in detail on the outcomes of what we have from our housing element, you know, why we're getting, why we're looking here and why we've been looking at other sites going forward. I know this has been said before, but I wanted to emphasize it again here that when we have low housing income, or when we have a development that gets built, we get to assume that it's a hundred percent affordable in our planning, but if it doesn't get built at a hundred percent, we have a net loss problem. So we're trying to maintain control of our zoning in the long term, and this is one of those sites that we're looking at to make sure that we maintain control. I see staff nodding at me like I'm expecting, so I won't ask the question, but that's the thing that's in the back of my mind through all this. I reread the Cosmont study from the Isabel crossings project today as well to really look at, you know, what are, what are the economics of this unit type or the mix of unit types that we're seeing here? This one has a, as opposed to Isabel Crossing, this, this place has a demolition to go through as well, which also has a cost effect as well. So I'm looking at that relative to the pricing of, you know, the community impact fees that we're talking about and the endowment fund relative to the rezoning that we're talking about here to make sure that we're getting a good deal. So I'm interested to hear what the rest have to say about that. Those are my initial comments.
Okay, thank you. Customer one?
So there's been a lot of conversation about this project and the reports about this being a transit village, and given the current uncertainties in the federal funding climate, does that affect, has that affected any of the planning or the designs of this community? Or, you know, I think even beyond the specific parcels we're talking about tonight, are we still, how are we changing, or is it too early to think about changing anything? Given, you know, are there uncertainties about Valley Link, for instance?
So I think the specific plan area as a whole, the neighborhood, while it was designed to be transit supportive, like some of our midtown conversations, it was also meant to be independent, a complete neighborhood with a mix of uses. And so because housing demand is still remains relatively high, it's not necessarily impacted by Valley Link's schedule.
Okay. So I was also glad to hear that the applicant has made a lot of effort to try to lease out the commercial property. It's a little concerning when we're converting from commercial to all this residential and what that does to the jobs and housing balance. How do we think more long-term, let's say in the twenty years of the general plan, that would be affected?
So most of the buildings on this site now are vacant and have been vacant for some time. And as the applicant said, there isn't a lot of market demand for this type of facility. And when we look at the age of this type of office stock, it's not really what's desired now in the market. There's demand for newer facilities with amenities and services and things for the new workforce. And so don't think that this particular parcel is going to have a big ripple effect on some of our long-term plans that we're contemplating in the general plan.
Okay. You said two of the three are vacant. Is the third one expected to be vacant reasonably soon?
I think there's a lease still on the third building for five or seven years, and it's used by Comcast for van storage and things like that.
Okay. And that doesn't affect what we're trying to do?
No, it shouldn't.
Okay. You know, I read over and over the two different funds and what they are, and I just, it's not clear to me the difference between the two, and maybe if you give me examples of what kinds of project would be funded by each one, they seem so similar to me.
Sure, it is confusing. They are special funds that are designed to be filled, I guess, through these types of negotiations, so they differ from your impact fees. Social opportunity endowment has been established through your municipal code, and it is a reserve of funds that council can use to pay for human service programs to help our lower-income residents. The community benefit fund is newer. It was established through policy. Council adopted a policy early last year, and it has a series of categories that money could be used to pay. So programs are things like public amenities and facilities, so parks, trails, even public buildings, economic incentive programs, climate resilience programs, and even some events. So it's not meant to be operational funds. It's meant to be one-time payments for special projects and used in conjunction with other funding sources.
Okay, so the social opportu- opportunendowment fund is specifically for low-income residents?
That's correct.
Is that only for residents? Like, how, would unhoused people be able to be served by those funds?
Councilmember one, this is your city manager, Mariana Birch, just adding to what Mr. Ross has said. Traditionally, social opportunity endowment funding has been going through the Human Services Commission, so it basically adds to the funding that that commission distributes in addition to city B G and H funding. So basically, it's the funding that supports our local nonprofits that do serve low-income and homeless population, but also serves community in other areas. So, but that funding traditionally has been used to add to the funding available that is distributed with the assistance of that commission. And as Mr. Ross mentioned, community benefit funding is a new funding source that staff brought to the city council for consideration, and in addition to examples mentioned by Mr. Ross, the city doesn't have general impact fees that would pay for fire stations and police station improvements. So this source, community benefit funding, could be used for fire stations, for example, in the future as one of many sources in addition to what Mr. Ross has mentioned.
So is the split fifty-fifty? How do we decide how much goes into each?
The split is not necessarily fifty-fifty. Staff is developing policies to determine how that split should occur, but generally what we have done is every time we negotiate one of those funding sources of both, we have been setting them aside, and then we would bring forward the necessary funding to the city council either as part of the budget process or as needs become evident. For example, I think it was at the last council meeting that you approved a hundred and twenty thousand per year for the next two years to be used towards human services funding from the social opportunity endowment fund. So we will finalize a policy that will establish the breakdown between the two funding sources, but at this point, you see the use of those funds either during the budget process or as needs become evident during the fiscal year. This is very confusing. Hopefully, this is helpful.
No, it is. This actually totally clears it up. I think that's all I have for now. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Customer, questions, comments? Okay, Vice Mayor?
All right. A couple of things. So first of all, just on the project site. I know we're referring to it as three commercial buildings, but I've, you know, passed through and checked out the site. It's, it is three buildings, but the site is really a giant parking lot with three buildings in the back. So the majority of where this build is, as far as I can tell, is actually replacing, you know, a empty parking lot. And I mean no offense by this, but the buildings are older. I don't think, without major renovations, you're going to see renters in the near future. So I do share the concerns about replacing commercial with residential, since we do have limited commercial also. This really feels like a prime spot to do it, so I'm in favor of the zoning change. The social opportunity endowment fund, I'm really glad we're getting, you know, extra funds in there. You know, we're getting to a point where it could be a true endowment fund and, you know, might be a permanent addition to the city that we have, you know, those funds in perpetuity, which would be a great place to finally end up. You know, if that keeps growing and we keep getting more every year, even better, like, you know, we want this to be something that really serves our nonprofits, so I'm grateful for that part. There's a couple of just little notes on the design elements. I'm not, you know, I'm comfortable with modern design. I'm comfortable with more contemporary designs. I do think some of the examples used, I would agree, are going a little too far in the modern era. What we have for Triad is, is kind of pushing the limits, I think, for Livermore to begin with. So looking to the neighbors, to the east also, for design ideas to make it blend in with the neighborhood. I still want it to have its own feel and its own look, but making sure it's not, you know, we have this one ultra-modern neighborhood, and then the rest of Livermore looks completely different. You know, we have a very rich heritage. We have a very rich history with lots of, you know, great ideas to draw from. So that's kind of my thoughts on the design elements. I know it's not very specific, but that's kind of where I would fall. Most of my comments, I suppose, from here are really, you know, for the developers as much as anything. Looking at kind of some of the clauses we have, the inclusionary ordinance for the city of Livermore is mentioned in our development agreement. The, you know, the options always exist, but it really is important to the city, and we've affirmed how important it is multiple times to have a variety of inclusionary housing that fits the different model types, the different styles. It's one of our values that, like I said, we've affirmed as a council multiple times. So I think as you're looking towards the entitlement process, you know, how do we get the inclusionary in there? How do we make sure it's a variety of different products? Especially if you can do a variety of different income levels. You know, as, to surprise no one, Livermore, as much as everyone else, is struggling with the low and very low. If that is a possibility, we're, you know, always really excited to see that come in projects. So, you know, really looking at how do we incorporate it into the project? How do we make sure we're getting that, you know, that variety and built into the project as is? And then the last thing, as the commenter came up, we really do want you working with our labor partners on this and looking towards our labor partners of how do we make sure we are using programs that have, you know, an apprenticeship program with them, you know, that are paying fair wages, that are making sure that the people who are building the buildings don't have to commute a hundred miles to get here to be able to afford to live where they can. You know, I understand that labor is expensive, but we do need to really make sure that we're paying an appropriate wage so that we can have the people who are building our buildings live in Livermore and live in our surrounding communities, have healthcare, you know, have a pipeline for future apprentices. So as we're looking towards those entitlements, that's going to be something very important to me to be looking for, is really what are those partnerships and what are those deals that are happening to make sure we're having, you know, appropriate labor for the work for the site? I think those are some of the biggest things for me. Like I said, I think this is a good, you know, this is a good project. This is a good conversion. I just want to make sure as those entitlements come in, they are not just reflecting maximizing housing, but also reflecting the values Livermore has, and I believe from what I've seen, hopefully, the values that we share. So just some notes on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good comments, all. Yeah, I was going through this, and the first thing I was looking for was the traffic study, because we were converting this office space into four hundred and fifty housing units, and I didn't, I didn't find it, but to hear your comments, obviously, the work has been done and that I was heartened by your comments that no significant traffic impacts is the net result. Because that's, you know, we are looking at, you know, bringing in, first we were bringing in BART, and now it's Valley Link. But I think if, as we add to this neighborhood, having a robust transportation system, whether we've got Valley Link or whatever, we're going to be moving, you know, thousands of people out of this neighborhood, so we've got to make So, we've got to make sure that, as you pointed out, there will be no significant traffic impact. So, I think we need to stay focused on that. As when I looked at this site, you know, we had some iGate firms up here that spun out of iGate. And they were looking for the office space. And we, as when we were on the General Plan Advisory Committee discussions, talking about the maintaining that inventory of commercial office and industrial. And, yeah, this is office. It could be tech space as well, but we're taking it out of that inventory and putting it into housing. So, I just, we need to be sensitive to that, that we're. We've got less than ten years of space left, probably even less than that of inventory. So, we need to, again, be mindful of that. I'm a chemist, so architecture and that vocabulary sort of eludes me. To me, modern is the Marin Civic Center. One of the most beautiful buildings ever built. That's modern. What I saw in the renderings, particularly on page four oh three, you, Councilmember Dunbar was talking about the planes that plane. So, I personally, I was heartened when you were talking about farmhouse and craftsmen. That's what's gonna be going into Harridge and also the Cornerstone developments. So, I think the domestic vernacular, you know, having the the community not radically different. So, I was I was heartened by your comments about not so much focus on modern, unless it's the Marin Civic Center. But those those plane breaks. Again, Livermore has a very rich heritage here, and we've been maintaining a lot of that, particularly in the downtown, the Santa Barbara Revival and those sorts of architectures. So, and again, recognizing that, yeah, as I already pointed out, residential use is children more than than office. I also agree the, I think that using a local workforce and working with with labor to ensure that people that are building this can also avail themselves and to to live here and work here. So, I think those are are important considerations as well. So, on balance, when I first looked at this, I had some some real issues, but I listened to staff and having further conversations. I'm more comfortable with this, especially with your conversations tonight about modifications as this begins to to evolve and eventually come back. So, is there any other discussion or is there? Councilmember Dunbar?
And I'll just note three things. One is this space ends up being very similar to a space that's in Loveland, Colorado, that Gilig has been actually renting out as part of their I T space. And they had the same difficulty filling out this old Hewlett Packard. You know, it's about the same era buildings. And Loveland is growing quite rapidly and they and they cannot fill it with all their attempts. So, I agree that it probably isn't the right fit for the spaces that we're trying to attract. Even, you know, they were trying to do the, they had a brewery in there. They had some small.
If anything's gonna attract, anything is gonna be a brewery, right?
Yeah, and they just couldn't make it work. So, it was, you know, I'm okay with where we've landed.
I was wondering where your connection was to Loveland. I thought that was really esoteric and then, oh, Gilig, all right, got it.
I was getting there.
Just took a while. Okay, very good.
I am looking to my fellow councilmembers on LAPT to make sure that our bus system continues to expand in this area as we add these number of housing units. We need this transition between what we have now and where Valley Link will be in a few years. But we have this interim space. We have the same thing with water and with traffic and with all of our development where we have these interim years where not everything's quite online yet. But we don't, we're making improvements on the roadway to make the bus stops more accessible along the way here.
Well, there's one right across from Cornerstone.
Yes, exactly. And we're making the ones that are on the street even nicer than they are to nice waiting islands and lights and all that good stuff. When I, you know, listen to what's been said and listening to, or in my analysis of this, the word I kept going back to is balancing. The thing that we're trying to, we're trying to balance sort of five things in my head here. We're trying to balance the development being financially feasible. We're trying to balance the community benefit for the rezoning that comes along with the rezoning because of the needs that we know from our last council meeting we have for our unhoused and needy folks in the community. We're balancing fair wages and standards during development. We're balancing consideration for the neighbors nearby, especially to the east because they're more established. And we're balancing the number of housing units and the affordability of those housing units. So, I'm expecting that when we get a final application, that those things are all in good balance.
Okay. Any further discussion? What's the pleasure of the council? Okay, your moving staff recommendation? Okay. Motion is made by Councilmember Barrios.
Second.
Decided by Vice Mayor Branning. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extinctions? Passed unanimously. Gentlemen, look forward to seeing you back here. All right, moving on to that we have no matters for consideration, council committee reports and matters initiated. Start on this side, Councilmember Barrios. Any thing that's not in your report? We got your report? Anything that you want to? Okay, very good. So, we got it. Okay, very good.
What's a literary thing? Whatever it's called, art fair over Las Vasitas. And I, hey, my background is I taught elementary school, my political science degree. So, I needed kindergarten. Anyway, I read a lot of books to the kids, which I really enjoyed. Which now is kind of hard to go read a kid's book because I have no reason. Well, no excuse, even though they're great. Anyway, the author, Liberty Stickers was there. And he is really interesting. They brought a mother and a daughter and and they made up their own questions to ask him. And he had a good time answering the questions. They were kind of somewhere off the wall that. So, anyway, he, I think he lives in the city. So, anyway, that's, it was a good thing I went to. It's interesting. There's a gentleman talking about conspiracy theories and how they develop and how they continue, which I bought a little book, so it's interesting reading right now.
All right, very good. Councilmember Dunbar?
You'll probably note it at the end, but I'm here with some props. I've got my motorcycle helmet and my bike helmet here because May is Motorcycle Safety Month and Bike Safety Month. So, I wanted to read the following. Remind everyone that no matter what you're riding, be mindful of others' safety. The bigger and faster the thing that you have, the more potential you have to harm others. So, always be careful to those of you looking at your cell phone and turning right in front of me without signaling on my way home today. Get it together. I hope to see many of you this Thursday morning and afternoon at Bike to Wherever and Bike to School Bay stations throughout Livermore. I'll be at Arroyo Seco and Jackson Avenue and then hitting the other stations along the way back to my day job. And that's, that was my add-on.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Well, May is always the busiest month. We have, as we saw from the Proclamations, Jewish American Heritage Month and A A N H P I Heritage Month. Cinco de Mayo just happened. It's also graduations. I have a promotion and a graduation in my family. And although on school board, I attended about ten graduations and promotions every year. This year I only have two. But it is great to go out and see all the celebrations and although it keeps my calendar very full. I just want to mention a couple of upcoming events because people always have a report on things when it's too late. They've already happened. So, Friday, Open Heart Food Bank is having an open house and I'm excited to go see that. And then, of course, Livermore Street Fest Saturday and Sunday.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Branning?
Thank you. From my report out, there was a couple of interesting things in the last few weeks. One was my two jobs actually intersected for probably the first time. I tried to keep them fairly divided. But actually, LAPT and P U S D met last, I think it was last week or the week before. In the last two weeks, met to just discuss how we can get more student riders onto buses and how we can make sure we serve the school trippers better. So, it was interesting kind of sitting on both sides of the aisle on that one, which was a fun new experience for me. I also wanted to just mention an event that I got to go to, which was a Papa's Tri-Valley Asian Heritage Celebration. This is one of the coolest events of the year for me. I always enjoy it. It's celebrating just a variety of different talents, musical, song, dance, other skills for the A N H P I community and beyond. It's cheap, it's fun, it's a great event. My wife went with me for the first time and she had a blast. So, it's not just me. She really enjoyed it. So, highly recommend something to look forward to for next year. Councilmember Wong already mentioned Street Fest, which is one of our, you know, biggest events of the year. Come downtown, enjoy, do some shopping, support our local businesses, support downtown. It is a great weekend. And that is this entire weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And then I just wanted to follow up and make sure that staff does follow up with Craig, our speaker from earlier about the parking issues. And look into it. It is, you know, parking downtown is something that comes up frequently. I want to make sure, you know, we have clear rules, but it's understood by the community. I know things changed recently, but making sure it's clear for everyone and making sure it's working in a way that, you know, supports our businesses, allows circulation, supports the residents who live there. And if I leave it to you, I'm not doing a Real Matters Initiated on it. Just something to to kind of have you keep an eye on and hope you follow up with him about what we can do there. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, a couple of things. It's in my report. But one of the remarkable things about the Tri-Valley is that the five cities do get along. And we went to Washington, D.C. The five mayors of the Tri-Valley went to, we met with our House and Senate electorate representatives and their staff. We met with the D O T, members of HUD and the Department of National, the National Nuclear Security Administration. Great meeting with them. One of the things that was concerning about D O T was to hear them talk about the real focus of the administration was big, beautiful bridges and roads. Not so much things like buses and mass transit, but big, beautiful roads and bridges. That was, we're continuing to advocate for transit like Valley Link and to ensure that we keep transit at the forefront because it's something we're desperately going to need to move people. But it was great having all five mayors back there and advocating for the Tri-Valley. Also, I attended a Knights of Columbus recognition event. It's called the Red, Blue and Gold Dinner. And they honored the Tri-Valley's first responders and recognized Police Officer Curtis Agnes and L P F D Captain Jared Jamison as first responders of the year. So, certainly, congratulations to both of them for the recognition. Also, there, you may recall that there was a tragedy similar to what Councilmember Dunbar was talking about. A motorcyclist was killed on Mines Road. And so, to create public awareness, there's going to be a memorial sign installed to commemorate Justin Thomas and in support of Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. The sign will be installed by the end of this month, located at North Mines Road and Shirley Way. And it will read, "Look Twice, Save a Life in Memory of Justin Thomas." So, that will be installed at the end of this month. And finally, we lost a very dear friend to Livermore. And that was Ruth Gaston, Ruth Stern Gaston. She was born in nineteen thirty-three as the Nazis rose to power. And Ruth immigrated to the United States in nineteen thirty-nine. Throughout her long life, she used her personal experiences with hate, poverty and oppression to advocate for others who are suffering now. She taught parenting skills and passed her Jewish experiences on to the next generation. She built community among all religions through Tri-Valley Interfaith Interconnect, which still has their monthly chats. So, may her memory be a blessing and an inspiration for all. And with that, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, we have closed session tonight?
Pardon me?
We have closed session?
We still have one more.
Sorry, please don't adjourn yet.
That's okay. Closed session, we will adjourn into closed session. So, with that, I will adjourn into closed session, but will adjourn in memory of Ruth Stern Gaston. Thank you, Sam. Sam Stone is in the audience tonight. Thank you very much. We're adjourned into closed session.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment in closed session?
No, there's no public comment.
Does anybody wish to public comment, public comment for the closed session?
No, sir.
Seeing none, okay.
Thank you.
I ran it again.
Yeah.
To report from the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your City Attorney, Jason Alcala. No, I have nothing to report. The City Council did not take any reportable action in closed session. That concludes my report.
Very good. In that case, there being no further business coming for the council. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Good night. Thank you.
You actually parked in the hall?
Yeah, you did. You parked in the Vice Mayor's spot.